2011, would you stand please for a moment of silent reflection and salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Emery.
Here.
Councilman Brennan.
Here.
Councilwoman Cynthia.
Here.
Councilman Diver.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mechanico.
Here.
Councilman Borback.
Here.
This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the open public meeting law. Notice of this meeting was included in a list of meetings sent to the Coast Store and the Asbury Park Press, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website. And I hope everybody's using revised agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Your Honor, I just have to, I have to bemoan the fact that, once again, we come in and there's additional items added to the agenda prior to the, just prior to the meeting.
No, the...
I say there's additional items added to the agenda just prior to the meeting.
The...
Yeah, I would like to say this is, you know, it's not really fair. We're supposed to read this right here and then vote on it?
In fairness, I gave it to everybody, I gave everyone a copy directly two weeks ago. It should have been on the agenda. I put that in front of everybody right before the meeting. Last month, we did...
This agenda wasn't before us two weeks ago.
No, no.
This new revised agenda...
I thought you held the ordinance for the ordinance.
I said I couldn't read it because I'm just here. I don't... You may have done that, John. I couldn't read this yet because I didn't have time to read it because it's here. And then we had a meeting before the meeting. So, in fairness to me and the other council people, quite frankly, putting stuff up right on the dais and expecting us to vote for it is a bit unfair. It should be avoided.
We just did this two weeks ago. We put something up on the agenda before anyone saw it and we voted on it and we threw out of court deal. You try to understand what's different.
Any other discussion?
I did read it there. I came in early and I read it.
But we got it two weeks ago. I have to say that.
I read it two weeks ago when you read it.
I voted that two weeks ago specifically. I didn't want to hand it out the night of.
Well, I'll try to read it through.
It didn't get put on, that was all.
Any other discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Ms. Cynthia?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Mechanico?
Yes.
Mr. Borback?
No.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 25th, 2011, the regular session, and May 2nd, 2011, the special section, session? May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second you.
Any discussion on the minutes? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Ms. Cynthia?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Mechanico?
Yes.
Mr. Borback?
Yes.
We have no public hearing tonight, but we do have, I have some discussion items. Just I'd like to remind everyone that August 6th, which is a week from Saturday, is the fundraiser for the First Aid Squad. It's a golfing event and they have lunch and dinner. I think almost all homes in town got a copy of that. If you'd like to go, we have copies in the office, but it's August 6th. It's a good cause. Just to remind you that our next council meeting is not until August 15th and we only have one in August. September 24th is the senior health fair at the school and we just found out it will also be the same day that flu shots will be given at the community center. And October the 8th is our townwide garage sale date. Council committee reports. Councilman Brennan?
Your Honor, just, I know that, and I don't have the answer, but I want to share with the council that I know that there was a problem and perhaps you could shed the light on it since you were here. There was, in pitch over of the phones, there was a loss of people's ability to be able to call until, onto the 449 exchanges at the Borough Hall.
Yeah, it's been resolved. Apparently, we dealt with Broadview and Broadview had sold that particular line to Verizon and somehow Verizon had not turned it over to Cablevision, but they did get it set.
The 449 is still good.
Oh, everything's good, yeah. Anything else, John?
No.
And also our bills are starting to come in for cable and they're remarkably lower than what they were, remarkably. Councilwoman Cynthia? Councilman Diver?
No report.
Councilwoman King?
No report.
Councilman Mechanico? Councilman Borback?
No report.
Can I just ask Councilwoman King whether or not we're, anytime this is in the century, we're going to get the rate study on the water and sewer?
Sometime in the century, John.
I've only been asking for it. You've been saying it's coming for the last two years. I was wondering.
No, we do have, we do have information that has been dropped off to Colleen. Unfortunately, I have not had the chance to look at it. I have been in touch with Bob Allison and I have talked to Colleen and as soon as we get through the bond ordinance, Colleen and I are going to sit down and then I'm going to be sitting down with Bob Allison along with my co-chair.
What information have you provided to Colleen?
I haven't received it. I haven't received it.
So this is information that someone else provided to Colleen?
No, this is information that Bob Allison provided.
You've got some information about the water, the water rate study, Colleen?
I'm not exactly sure. I mean, we've gathered some information about surrounding towns rates. I don't know. Is that what you're referring to? I'm not, I'm not quite sure what. There's been nothing recent. Like what? He dropped something off to you a couple of weeks ago? No. Okay. Then I'll have to get back with him.
I mean, when was the last time any activity was taken on determining? Because our, those of you who have been following this issue know that our, you know, our water utility is being supported by the $80 a year pass-through charge and basically, you know, our income is barely sufficient to be able to cover our expenses in our water utility. And our rate study has been sorely needed and in progress for over a year and a half. And so when was the last time any activity was made, if anybody can answer this, with respect to getting the rate study?
Item in the beginning of this year, John, when I was working on the budget, is when I went through the surrounding towns again to see if anybody had had increases since I originally gathered the information in 2010.
But I mean, what difference does it make whether anybody around the surrounding towns have increases? I mean, the fact of the matter is, is we need, sorely need a rate study. So my question again is, when was the last time any information was provided or gathered with respect to determining a rate study? Can anybody answer that question?
The last information that I was aware of, anything being looked at, was in 2010 at some point. Bob Allison was looking, he was working with Joe Masterson on the consumption and the user rates that we currently charge to see what the different rate structures could be if we decided to go a different way, but that's the last that I had on that. And the reason, John, that we're looking at other towns is because the way that other towns charge is varied and nobody seems to do it exactly alike. And Allison was trying to come up with something that was going to be feasible and not too harsh on the residents. So he was, you know, he had asked Colleen to get some information and then we were going to, you know, move forward to see what would be the least burdensome to our residents. This is not something that, the rates haven't been raised in such a long, long time that it's a very, very, very delicacy.
When's the last time rates were raised?
Oh my gosh.
The surcharge.
When was that? When was it?
The surcharge was put on in 2007. Prior to that, I believe it was somewhere in the early 90s that rates had been raised.
Okay. I mean, look, in the meantime, we spent $800,000 to outfit the entire town with water meters that we can get instant payments readings. We know what people's consumption, consumption is. Why don't we simply determine what a gallon of water costs by virtue of what it is we're paying for the overall gallonage? And do a mathematics. I mean, I could do a rate study here in five minutes. I don't understand. The only thing I can think of, the only reason why, and this is why I bring it up, the only reason why I think we have not gotten a rate study is because there is fear amongst certain members of this council about raising people's water rates. You know what? People are already paying higher water rates as a result of this surcharge that's being imposed upon them. It's time to deal maturely with our water and sewer utilities. Stop dodging.
I can only tell you, I'm not dodging it because of that. I'm not dodging it for any reason. I just think that we have to find the best way to move forward with this and I would hate to raise it to such an exorbitant amount that our residents that live in town are going to really be hit very hard. And I've told this to Bob Allison. I want this to be done in such a way that it seems even and right and there is different ways that you can do it.
Well, what's the problem with finding out what a gallon of water costs and charging people by what their usage is?
That's, that is one of the ways, but there are still other ways that can be done. And that's what Bob Allison is trying to come up with.
What other way would be, what other way would be more fair than charging people based upon what a gallon, a gallon of water costs and billing them according to their consumption?
Aren't there base rates that are set because of sewer costs, et cetera, et cetera? Then you're charged an over... I mean, to be fair, I mean, everyone pays sort of an equal base rate and then you pay.
Right, because the facility cost for, you know, the smelter, how do you pronounce it?
It's very easy to find out, it's very easy to find out what it gets.
The facility cost for them is, is substantial. And in fact, if you look at what our town pays per, I'm sorry, if you look at what our town charges, it's a very nominal amount, maybe $160 for the entire year, I believe it was. And then the rest is the facility charge. Now, the facility charge fairly should be higher than that amongst all residents because that's the facility charge. Then the water rate charge, usage charge, should be additional. And so we're trying to do it fairly without hurting the seniors particularly and those are that are in the fixed budget. And we do have a large, a large amount of seniors in the town and so we're looking at a way to do it fairly, not to hurt the one...
And I can tell you, I...
Excuse me, excuse me. Councilman Mechanico is next.
I just want to ask Colleen a question and I want to put you on the spot just to clear up something Mr. Brennan said. Are you struggling to pay utility bills? You don't have enough receipts coming in?
No, we, every year since I've been here, the revenue is, is lacking compared to what the expenses are. We pay out to other authorities for sewage treatment, for rural water, for water treatment. Those costs have gone up every year and our revenues have basically stayed flat. So we are running into an issue where...
Even with the new meter system, you don't see any increase in revenue now?
No.
Councilman Borback?
I think, excuse me. The idea of charging for a gallon of water, I think, has merit. What we have to look at is cradle to grave. The water that comes in, it's used and it's processed. Right now, if I'm not mistaken, the town assumes with the water, well, it does, it assumes, your water meter reads the water going in. It does not read the water going out. Some people will water the grass and so on, so they won't be using the sewer system as much. However, if we disregard that fact and just say the water comes in and it goes out, how much does it cost to provide water and then when the water's done, going down, process it and clean it or whatever and then ship it out? In other words, the sewer cost is built into the price of a gallon of water.
Tom, in three.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Councilman?
I would just advise you, when I lived, before I lived here, 15 years ago, I lived in Howa. When I moved to Howa in 1986. The water rates there are probably among the highest in Monmouth County. I was paying back in the 80s and early 90s over $2,000 a year. You, it was a $250 base charge before you even turned on a spigot. And once you ran the water, whatever, you watered your lawn and did whatever you did in the normal course of, you know, living in your home, our water bills were anywhere from $2,400 to $2,700 a year. Now, obviously, one of the reasons I came to Spring Lake Heights, and you should all know, you live in a great town because we have the lowest water rates anywhere. However, I would not like to see it turn into what happened to Town. It was mismanagement. It was crazy. Now, I'm not saying that would happen here, but I think we need to be aware of the fact in raising rates, you can't just gouge them all at once. You have to have some sort of a plan as to how you want to raise the rates. And I would disagree respectfully about the per gallon charge because I think people would be in for a very rude awakening.
The people who consume would be in...
I think everybody would.
No, everybody would be in a position to have control over what it is their water bill is going to be. Right now, you say you want to protect seniors. The best way to protect seniors is to go to a per gallon charge. And the reason why is because seniors use less water. The point is, is that up, up until we got the new water meters, we were never in a position to be able to impose per gallon charges. Now that we spent $800,000 of the taxpayers' money so that we can have this glorious new system, we have the capacity to be able to be ultimately fair. And the ultimate fair thing to do is to charge by a per gallon charge because that way people have control. If you want to reduce your water bill, you reduce your usage.
Okay. Councilman Borback, but this would belaboring a point that...
Yes, I'm going to make it very quick. You know, I think, Richie implied that there would be some sort of mimicry or we're trying to hit...
No, 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 I'm not implying that at all. Don't put words in my mouth. I did not imply that.
That was the impression I had, okay? And to be fair, I might have an incorrect impression, okay? However, that said, if you want to be fair to people, you don't have some mysterious thing where we don't really know how much our water bill is going to be. You have a gallon of water, it comes in, it goes out and you pay per gallon. Everybody can see it on their bill. It's not like we're gouging. It's, you're seeing what you're paying for.
Everything we're hearing tonight is what the rate study is all about, my dear.
Yeah, but we've been waiting for the rate study.
I know that. And Sarah's assuring us we're going to get it.
Yeah, but when? Before the election, after the election?
Because according to Colleen...
I'm on a bet that we don't see it before the election.
According to Colleen, and I hear this in the office all the time, we're really in trouble with our utility because we don't really take in enough money to pay for everything. And we need to raise the rate somewhat and we, so we need the rate study so we can look into that intelligently.
I mean, as far as being on finance committee, this is not something, we already have the utility budget done for this year and it's balanced for this year. My, or, and we have a nice surplus in the capital if something goes wrong, like a water, you know, some water main breaks, so we need something for the water tower. If we raise rates at the last quarter, that puts us in for next year.
Nobody's, they're not talking about raising rates last year.
No, I'm just saying that that's what, that is what John is talking about.
No, I'm not. And in all due respect, Kathy, in all due respect, just because you budget that there's going to be a certain amount of revenue doesn't mean that the revenue actually arrives. And I think you ought to take a look at what our balance sheets are right now for the, for the water utility because I think you might be shocked to find out that we're going to have the same problem we've had the last few years, which is our revenues are down and we're going to, we could very well be confronted with the same situation that the council was confronted back the last time they, they put in an emergency pass-through. The idea that there was this emergency pass-through and that this council has sat on its hands and not rectified the problem is, in fact, the mismanagement that is similar to what Mr. Diver was alluding to in Howa.
Any other discussion? I'd like to make, have a motion to open the first voice of the public for any business, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
One favor?
My name, my name is Borback Mowgli. I live on 1005 Park Avenue.
I think it's on.
Hello?
Is it on? It's on. Hello?
Joe May, the code enforcer, issued a violation to the owners of the lot on 1007 Park Avenue on June 2nd, 2011. The violation was to be corrected in seven days. Today is 53 days since June 2nd and the violation was issued and nothing has been done about it. I wanted to know if anyone on the council knows anything about this situation or the status of what's going on.
I know that, I don't, anybody want to answer? No, that Joe May is, I, all I'm allowed to say is that Joe May is dealing with it and very shortly it will be taken care of. And I know we've been telling you that, but I know for a fact it is.
I saw that letter too.
Yeah, it's being, it's being dealt.
There has been a letter sent to the individuals.
Because he said that he was going to notify me.
Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm the goddess, Pitya Pimian, Winter, Spring Lake, South Carolina. I want to say I'm happy to see Carter and our chief of police here tonight to answer questions on what was raised last meeting about new SUV and new trucks because we certainly do need new trucks for already and I understand. I'd like them each to explain particularly, people have a misconception why they want the SUVs and not a regular car. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Say your name and address.
David Schneck, 302 C Street in Belmar. And you may recall, I was here a couple of months ago on the candidate for assembly in our district. And, you know, the main reason why I've been getting involved in local politics is because I want to do something about the way the state is abusing suburban towns in New Jersey with the tax situation where we're paying all this income tax and residents of Spring Lake Heights pay a lot of state income tax and get almost nothing back from the state in a state education aid which was supposed to be for property tax relief. But as you know, it's all going to the Abbott districts and the suburban towns get nothing. And then they offer up as a solution that we should merge with other towns and basically these small towns should cease to exist. And I don't think that's the right solution. So I became interested in Senator Mike Dougherty has a plan. It's called the Fair School Funding Plan. Is anyone familiar with that? And it's a plan to take all the receipts from the state income tax and divide it equally among every student in the state of New Jersey. And, you know, the, the collection of the tax is already very progressive. You know, the bottom 50% paid no state income tax and the upper, you know, 10% to 15% paid a lion's share of the income tax. So they already have their, you know, their progress, progressivity, is that a word? Or, you know, some of us call it wealth redistribution, built into the collection of the tax. But the state constitution on the part about the income tax says that it's to be distributed for the equal benefit of all residents of the state of New Jersey, not that 90% of it should go to the Abbott districts and the other 450 towns should be left scrambling for, you know, the crumbs that are left over. So there's, a lot of towns, or several towns, have passed this resolution that Senator Dougherty has recommended, pointing out how unconstitutional our tax collection system is right now and the great harm it's doing to suburban towns and...
Do you have a number for that?
Well, it's not a state law. It's a proposed...
Bill?
Resolution, you know, just a statement of opinion. Yeah. And I've been attending the Bel, I've attended every Belmar City Council meeting and after pointing this out, meeting after meeting, like five meetings in a row, I finally got Belmar to pass it last Wednesday.
Do you have copies for us?
Yeah, I do, actually, if I may...
Maybe you could give it to the clerk?
Oh, okay. How many do you need? Eight or...
Whatever you want.
I also want to point out...
I'll give you all the mail. Keep one for myself if you have any questions. I think that should be enough.
I also want to point out another thing. It's the fact that, that's what's really unfair for the municipal governments in town. It's the fact that when tax appeals are done, even though the municipal government, such as our town, has a very small percentage of the pie as far as the overall property tax. The school has, has over $100,000, $150,000 more in...
$150,000?
And, I think it's... Over $150,000 more in taxes than, than the town does. Then Monmouth County is almost identical to us. Then we also have the fire district. But when we have a tax appeal, we've had tax appeals that hit us literally $80,000 for our, for our small government to not have $80,000 in one year is, puts us to whether or not we have to lay somebody off next year.
Well...
And, and the thing is, is it's not, it's not spread across. It's not spread across. It's just, the municipal government...
Real problem, we're all paying twice.
We've got a small portion of the tax bill and we're the only ones that get hurt for not raising taxes. Meanwhile, municipal, the Monmouth County, we have no say in whether or not they raise the county tax.
But let's, let me see. Okay. This is for the public.
Well, the real problem is that we're being forced to pay twice for the education of residents.
Have you given this to our school board?
Oh, no, I haven't approached your school board yet. The thing is, I assume that your school board is receiving, and I could be wrong, but enough money that they, that they require to run their schools effectively. And really, the purpose of the, of the state income tax, as stated clearly in the state constitution, is for property tax relief. So, you know, the towns are free to use this money however they see fit. They could send more to the school and use some of it for property tax relief or some of it for, I know the bills are tight in every town. I've attended a lot of city council meetings.
Mr. Shackham?
Yes, sir.
Do you know of the income tax dollar, how many cents of that are actually utilized for education?
I think it's, it's like pretty much all of it, but it goes to the Abbott districts and then...
No, no, no. Of the income tax...
State income tax.
The state income tax dollars, how much of it by way of cents? How many cents of the dollar, income tax dollar goes toward education funds?
Well, constitutionally, it's all supposed to go towards education. You know, that's the whole purpose of it. I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact number. But one problem is that these urban towns and the towns in the Abbott district are so flush with cash from all this, you know, they're spending $25,000, $28,000 per student. So they're building aquatic centers and performing arts centers and, you know, my daughter is in dance class and they had the, the dance show at Neptune, at the Neptune Performing Arts Center and Neptune is an Abbott district. And this is like Carnegie Hall. I don't know if any of you have ever been to it. But this facility had to be upwards of, you know, 50, 60 million dollars to build. It's huge.
But you could always move to Neptune and...
I'm sorry?
Say you could always move to Neptune and have your daughter go there.
Well, the point is that Neptune should pay its own way and Spring Lake Heights...
So you'd like us to look at this and...
Well, I would, yeah, I would like to respectfully suggest that you consider passing it. A number of towns have, if this, if Senator Dougherty's proposal was to become law, Spring Lake Heights would receive pot $5.6 billion in, in state education, excuse me, instead of what are you receiving now? According to my information, it's from 2009 and was like $119,000 or something, or maybe it's more now. I think Chris, I think they just updated a little bit this Republican plan. I know, Belmar, I know the numbers for Belmar, we were receiving six and change, almost $700,000 in, in state aid. And with the Christie's Republican plan, it was increased to $900,000. And they were bragging about it, saying how much they're doing for us. But under Senator Dougherty's plan, it would be $4.6 million in state aid.
Yeah, we could take a look at it. Councilman Mechanico would like to ask a question.
Sure. Say if they'll pass the assembly or the state, correct? Wouldn't it be challenged?
Well, of course, I'm sure it's going to be challenged and it's going to be fought. But if you believe it's right, you just have to fight for it. You know, one thing is, you know, the, the, these Abbott districts that are spending $25,000, $28,000 per student and they're turning out failing students. So we could do that for $7,500. We don't need to spend $28,000 to, to, to turn out kids that can't read, you know? So the problem is not that they're not spending enough money. That's for certain, you know?
We'll take a look at this.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Latice?
I'm sure you've read in the paper, goddess, you've read in the paper where Madisonmont is trying to put restrictions on the taxi. We have a taxi on our street, right? That advertises...
That advertises, is it Tequila or Gin? It looks horrible in the driveway there. Yeah, come and look at it. So I was wondering what had, what has happened with the checkout you were going to do on taxis and a couple...
We have the cheap area.
So you want us to look at the outside of the taxis?
Yeah, they come over Pitten Drive and here it is.
They've all got wrappers on them.
Yeah, they do, they all have wrappers.
Wrappers for subsidizing the free...
And then they get case to that.
Skies on one, cameras on one.
I've seen them on seventy-one.
There's loads of little kids on our street.
Okay, we'll look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? May I have a motion, close the first voice to the public, please?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unfinished business. This ordinance was originally introduced on July eleventh, two thousand eleven. It was tabled until this meeting. Ordinance number thirteen, two thousand eleven. This is a first reading, will the clerk read the title, please?
Bond ordinance number thirteen dash two thousand eleven. Bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements and the acquisition of various capital equipment appropriating one million four hundred and thirty thousand dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of one thousand three hundred and fifty-eight, sorry, one million three hundred and fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollar bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof authorized in and by the borough of Spring Lake Heights and the county of Monmouth, New Jersey.
May I have a motion, please, to introduce and advertise in accordance with the law? This is just the first introduction.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I think we've, I want to ask Dougherty a question. In here, it says the acquisition of Public Works Department includes two sanitation trucks. I assume that is one mega hauler?
Yes.
And you have a backhoe, comma, and a front loader.
Right.
Is that one piece of equipment or two?
No, they're two different.
So you have the, the backhoe part that does the digging and then you've got the front end loader on a different vehicle that does the lifting.
It's articulated, it's a different articulation. Here's the difference.
It's got a knuckle, Tom has got a knuckle in it so it can turn.
Right, right, I understand what articulated means.
That's the problem. Well, you see how it's locked in? And it doesn't have the rear backup. When you, when you're moving snow, let's say, you don't, you have that thing in the back for digging, that also...
Well, that's good for digging in the dirt too, right? I saw, I've seen a lot of...
Well, no, yeah, no, I mean, but that's why you don't want it on the loader. Because behind it, you're running into things with it.
Can you take that off and then put it back on?
No, no, here, here's the backhoe. This is a...
This, this one has...
It's a completely different thing.
This, this guy's got the, the...
It has a small bucket with a digging in the back for utility work.
Right, that's called the backhoe and that's the front end loader, right?
Yes.
And then we're going to buy a separate...
It's a different animal.
A separate tractor.
It's like a shovel and a rake. They're completely different animals, that's what I'm saying. If you look at it, it's because it appeared in the middle.
And so this guy is for the snow?
That's exactly what it's for. We had, not had that snow last year.
What would you do?
We're going to use it, we're going to use it for more things. We're going to have a four-in-one bucket we can pick up brush and stuff, but primarily that's our insurance policy for the snow.
All right, so, so what do you need the backhoe for?
It's for do- because we're replacing our nineteen eighty-eight John Deere, which we're finding hard to get parts for. Uh, any emergency work, if your water main breaks in front of your house, that's what's going to get it done.
Yeah, I've seen them.
Yeah.
Over the course of my lifetime.
Yeah, hopefully not too much, that's not a good one.
But this doesn't move snow?
No. Remember last year, our snow? I had a barrel loader from Seer in Spring Lake. It was because our backhoe couldn't do it.
But so this guy can't pick up snow?
It's too, it's small and it's...
But can it, can it pick up snow?
No, it can't, oh, yeah, you can pick up snow with it.
All right.
And around the yard, but it, but it, but it's not comparable. It's a different animal, that's all I'm saying.
I know one, one's a much bigger, better, better...
And it's articulated, so...
It's articulated, I...
So you can put it on, instead of pushing it forward, it's, it's much more maneuverable. That's why they all have them.
I, I understand, but so you want two tractors? One with the front end loader, backhoe?
I want a backhoe and I want a loader.
So you're not going to put the loader on the, on the one with the backhoe?
No, they're two different pieces of equipment.
I just said they're two different ones. I, I see that, Artie.
I'm, I'm, really, I'm misunderstanding.
They're not interchangeable. You can't take the piece off.
You have two tractors you want to buy.
Okay, you keep saying tractors, that's, okay, no, I have a wheel loader and a backhoe.
Right.
Loader, if you want to call it that, but it's a backhoe.
Right, but the part with the four wheels on it?
Yeah.
What do you call that?
Tractors or tires?
No, no, this is a, no, a tractor is something completely different. Yeah, okay, if you want to, but you know what, that's a...
It's a term misused, isn't it?
Uh, not really, I, I mean, this is, this is a back, it's a loader.
So you're buying two vehicles?
Yeah.
One's got an articulated front end loader?
No. This has got an articulated front end with a bucket. Do you see the picture?
Right, I see the picture.
That's all I'm saying. This is made...
So you're buying one vehicle with an articulated bucket?
I'm buying this vehicle, this is called a wheel loader and it's articulated and it's a larger bucket. This is primarily for loading material.
Then, then over here, you've got another one.
And I have another machine called a backhoe.
Right.
What this does is it digs, but it also has a small...
I know that it digs, Artie, but it also has a...
A small bucket to be able to clean up batteries, right?
What's the small bucket called?
It's a bucket.
A front end loader, right?
No, it's a bucket. This is called the bucket. The front end, it loads from the front.
I understand that.
Yeah.
You're, you're buying two, two, two trucks, two vehicles.
Two vehicles, two, two pieces of equipment.
Right.
Right, a backhoe with digging option and this is a loader. They're completely different animals. It's like a grader.
Can I tell you something?
Yeah, they're completely, and if you saw them side by side, you'd really see the difference. This is much larger.
Hold on, Artie.
I just want to make a comment that I put out. Has Mr. Boardback contacted you with any questions with regards to the...
It's called a backhoe loader, right?
That's what I said, yeah, you could say, yeah, but...
It's a bucket, so it's got, it's called a backhoe loader.
Right.
Right, okay, so it's a combination, it's not just the...
And that's what I said, yeah, it has a capability with a smaller bucket to be able to load the dirt and take it, absolutely, absolutely.
So you want, you want two pieces of equipment?
I want two different, because they're two different.
Okay.
John has a question.
And maybe I'm jumping to a conclusion because I know John, I have two questions that I answered.
I like to keep it very simple.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
I've seen both of these equipment and I am, I am used to industrial and construction sites. All right, so you want two pieces of equipment?
Yeah, yeah, two pieces, yeah.
All right.
John has a question.
Artie, the, the backhoe?
Yes.
Is going to be primarily used for what?
For utility work.
Yeah, so why are we not buying the backhoe out of the utility? We have three hundred thousand dollars in capital sitting in the utility capital account.
John, can I tell you, I don't care if someone donated, we buy it, I don't, I just need it. It's not, to me, it's the first one.
Given that we have three hundred thousand dollars sitting in a capital account in the utility, we can go, the backhoe is seventy-five thousand dollars, but of course, if we put it in a bond, there's going to be a twenty percent, two twenty percent cost overhead for the bonding of it, of the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. So we're going to be spending fifteen thousand dollars extra to bond something that we have the money sitting in the utility account for. That makes no sense to me. Should we spend fifteen thousand dollars just to pay something out of a separate bond when we have money sitting in, three hundred thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money sitting in an account that we can buy it from the account? Does that make sense to anybody up here?
Nope.
Does anybody want to defend that?
Yes, you could use the capital account for other equipment.
What other equipment, butch?
Well, we may, we may...
Fire hydrants.
Fire hydrants, fire hydrants are being, we're, we've been purchasing fire hydrants at the tune of four to six a year for, for the last bunch of years because they can only be installed at a certain rate. You're not going to buy, yeah, not this year because you knocked it out of the budget.
Well, the only, I can say is...
Three hundred thousand dollars, yes you did, three hundred thousand dollars.
The only other thing, if it helps at all, is, is don't forget, we do have those stations. We have, we have about twenty grand in repairs to the Fairway Muse list station, which we, we're going to have to do.
Okay.
Uh, we have, we have some other smaller stuff and other...
Now we're down to two eighty-one.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, but I don't know what's going to happen down the road. So I mean, it's our, that money could also be used for repairing the water plant, things like this, if it should happen. I'm just saying, that's, whether it will or not, I don't know, but it's...
So we want, so we have, we have three hundred thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money sitting in the utility capital account. And you want to buy a backhoe, which is at your own admission for the utility, in a general bond, not a utility bond, a general bond? Why, frankly, I don't even know whether we pass an audit, if we're auditing.
As far as I'm concerned, Councilman, I, I, it's on my wish list. Where are you funded from has nothing to do with it.
Yeah.
And that's all I'm saying.
Mr. Jipper? I just want to point, I mean, the backhoe could also be used for work in our parks.
It could be.
I mean, you know, it certainly has a multifunctional purpose, not just the utility.
What is the backhoe that we currently have predominantly used for?
Well, right now, we use it for loading in a recycling center, in a bid because it's small, you go in there. You do use it more often, but when we switch to a new recycling center, I won't need it for that. But could it be used for other things? Certainly it can. Is it primarily util for utility work? Absolutely. I need it most because I could figure out a way to get cans into a truck, but when a water main breaks, I need a backhoe. There, there is no replacement for it, so if that helps.
So with all due respect to the council, I don't know why we would be spending fifteen thousand dollars in soft costs on top of a seventy-five hundred dollar purchase price for a backhoe that's going to be used in the utility when we can save that fifteen thousand dollars simply by spending the money out of the account that we already have for capital acquisitions for the utility. And I think everybody in this audience agrees with that and I, I have not heard a good defense as to why we would be wasting fifteen thousand dollars, other than you want to give it to your handpicked attorney.
If you get that fifteen thousand figure...
It's on the schedule.
No, I, well, I would like to, can I make a...
Twenty percent, every time you bond...
Miss India, we've heard of John.
Come on, every time. It's a portion. Fifteen thousand dollars in soft costs on top of the seventy-five thousand dollar purchase price. Why would we pay fifteen thousand dollars in soft costs? It's twenty percent. Every time you bond a dollar, you got to pay an additional twenty cents to the attorney, the accountant, the auditor, the underwriter. That's why this council for years didn't use bonds.
Okay, Patty?
I, I just want to point out the fact that, that we have, I guess we do have three hundred thousand dollars in surplus or capital fund and I believe that that should be used for something if something happens. We have a whole water authority, a lot of towns don't have a water authority, we have a water authority. We have to worry about the water tank, we have to worry about the water infrastructure. And if we do have a water main break, it's going to cost a lot more than just that backhoe. And so we, we need to have a surplus in case we do have problems. For instance, Fairway Muse, I believe, Councilwoman King knows of, Fairway Muse had a few water breaks recently, right, water main breaks. And we haven't for a while, so, you know, we could be due for one. And we need to have surplus for a rainy day fund. We're doing a big bond, we are doing a big bond for equipment to get our town up on the, uh, the equipment that it needs to function and so we put this back in.
Councilman Boardback?
Yeah, it's like three hundred thousand dollars in the utility surplus?
No, you, it's the capital account.
Capital, sorry, capital account, sorry, wrong, wrong.
There's no money in the surplus. In fact, we're not going to have enough revenues to be able to pay...
Capital account, so it doesn't really, to me, make sense to put it in here. And then, you know, Artie, this is a wish list, you said. I'm skeptical that we'd need both pieces of equipment, I really am, especially since our belts are pretty tight, but I'm not even going to go there.
Okay.
Um, you know, your wish list aside, the police department...
Well, this is, can you, Councilman, one time, it started as a wish list, now it's a, we can't do that list unless we give up something.
You just, you just said it five minutes ago.
Well, I'm saying this was my list, yeah, but I'm saying, I, I don't want to be, I don't want to, a wish list sounds like, here's a, a grandiose list, if I get half, good, fine. I just don't want you to misunderstand. This, this is not a wish list. There are other ways we can do things for, like the loader, if we wanted to rent one for three months every winter, but in ten years, you would have paid for it, I don't see...
The backhoe, yeah, well, the backhoe comes with a loader, according to the...
No, nothing else.
According to the brochure.
Yeah, but it can't move...
It's called, it's called a backhoe loader. It's got, it's got the bucket there and it lifts stuff up.
It's not large enough to move heavy loads of snow. Now, when I'm talking snow...
But I didn't even want to go there. I wanted to also talk about the other wish list with the police department.
Can I hold it, Tom, can we just...
Go ahead.
Thanks. Artie, a couple of things. The mega hauler, actually, this question's for Tommy. We had thirty thousand dollars set aside for the purchase of the previous mega hauler, which we purchased, correct?
Yes.
But it didn't cost thirty thousand dollars. So we still have earmarked money for another mega hauler, do we not?
No.
In that account?
No.
We, we depleted that account on the purchase of the mega hauler?
It was about twenty-seven thousand dollars and there's, you know, we had some notes on that, there's soft costs involved in that, so...
So that, that account's been depleted?
I don't know to the penny, I'd have to look at it, but...
I mean, if there's, I mean...
It was a multi-purpose bond ordinance, that means if something else ran over, money got taken from that, it's, you know, it's, it's...
Could you find out for me? Because I'd just like to know what's in that account. I mean, I, I know that that money was there and I know that we didn't spend all that money because any money that we could, I mean, and then the other question I have for Artie is, you're looking for a utility truck of thirty-two thousand dollars, but of course, we're going to have to pay the twenty percent because you're going out by bond for six thousand dollars for a utility truck that has a useful life of five years. I know that you've been asking for the utility truck for several years, correct?
It's not really, it's not, it's a pickup truck.
It's a pickup truck.
Yeah, it's not Utah, I can't go where your head over the...
No, 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 it's a pickup truck.
All right. It's a nineteen eighty-eight. It's a twenty-three-year-old pickup truck.
But you've been asking for the pickup truck for a number of years.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That was its original wish list.
Yeah, that's right, that was on the original wish list.
Right. And in fact, you've made that request as part of your budget request for the last two years at least, correct?
Okay.
So, so we didn't pay for it out of the budget, so now we're going to be, you're getting whacked by our, by the handpicked attorney, bond attorney, handpicked accountant, underwriters, higher interest on the, on the bonds, because we didn't get what you've been asking for for the last two years.
Well, the only I'll say on the pickup truck is, it's a minimal life of five years. That's what it stipulates. It's a minimum life. It has to have at least five years. I can tell you, this pickup truck lasts twenty-three years. This is Spring Lake Heights. They tend to last longer here because they have to. So, I have to say, if you're asking for approval, I can prove to you it's much more than five years. That's all I can say.
My point's not the useful life, okay? My point is that you've been asking for, and historically, for those of you in the gallery here, historically, the councils have purchased short-term capital assets, which a utility truck is as opposed to others, or pickup truck is as opposed to others, by way of capital outlays within the general budget, or by way of bond anticipation notes. They don't carry the same overhead costs that are associated with a bond. And my point, Artie, is that you've been asking for that, as has supervisors for other departments been asking for those type of things, and this council chose not to do it that way. Instead, they chose to jump into a big jumbo bonding, which is going to carry the twenty percent extra.
Really?
That's my point.
Which has a question.
I need, I don't know if I have anything else, but I need some advice on this, please.
What are your scenarios?
It's like anything else when it comes to these things. This is a decision the governing body has to make. The amounts are there, what you, you feel that you need to run the town, you have to listen to your department heads, and that's how that decision has to be made. As far as my recommendations, what I've given recommendations on is, we have existing debt on the books. If you want to do this, if we're going to issue a bond, you have to have efficiencies of cost, and you have to group it all together. Do you have to do it that way? No. But that again is a decision the governing body has to make, which way they want to handle it. It's been, there's been plenty of information disseminated, I, you know, I've put out over and over again, if there's questions, please ask, and I get nothing back. And, you know, as far as what needs to be done, that's a decision that here at a meeting the governing body needs to make.
But it, as far as a financial issue, it would be practical and financially responsible to do it this way.
Add twenty percent to the purchase price?
You don't have to forty percent, will you?
But that's what it costs, Rich. It costs twenty percent on top of the purchase price to bond something as opposed to buying it at another level.
Okay, John, Mr. Dibber.
To John's point on the bands, I mean, if we were to go out and do a bond anticipation note every year for the next thirteen years, there are fees associated with those each year as well.
You can't do it for thirteen years.
I'm saying each year you did a band. If you did a bond anticipation note individually each year for the next thirteen years, each year meaning you took out a bond anticipation note, your fees and charges would probably wind up being the same as what we're doing in one note.
That's not accurate. And you know what, you know what, all you're doing is, by making that statement, Rich, is revealing your lack of experience with respect to bond anticipation notes. Bond anticipation notes, respectfully, bond anticipation.
Respectfully, John, I deal with them all the time, and I'm telling you, it's just like closing of a regular bond. You are still going to have attorney's fees, you're still going to have upfront fees.
What is the attorney fee? What is the attorney fee for a bond anticipation note? Tell me now, you know.
It depends on the note.
No, no, tell me what an attorney fee incurred is.
John, I'm not getting interrogated here. You and I.
Can we move on to the statement, which is an attorney's fees?
No, it is not inaccurate.
Patty?
Karen, Artie did indicate that this, that this twenty percent soft cost is an estimate, and it involves engineering fees for every single thing we buy, it's going to be an additional vote. Is that not correct?
Yeah, but I just want to.
We're going to have to go out and bid.
And again, I wouldn't, John, we're not to disrespect John. The twenty percent is the absolute statutory maximum that goes to everything. So, example, hypothetically, when you bought four hundred thousand dollars for a road project, the engineering for that, the acquisition of rights of way, things like that, are additional costs outside of the four hundred thousand dollars worth of mercatum and construction services you're buying. And those items are outside of that. So, here, for example, if you need to pay someone to repair your bid packages for someone's equipment, if it can't be bought off the list, traditionally, I think here we pay a vacuum to repair the bid package. So that, we're beside, the bond, as I'm pretty sure, bond attorneys are paid on a fee on the amount of the bond that paid off. Usually, it's either hourly or flat fee, depending on your agreement with the town. I believe this one, is this an hourly rate on your bond council?
I haven't done any bond issues with her, so I don't know.
With her contract, but it's hourly. So usually, the bond cost's a little bit higher, so, you know, it's more of an expertise and there's a lot of insurance involved. Sometimes it's first million, five thousand dollars, every million after that, a thousand dollars more. For the very large bonds, the very large, that standard, it goes in the cost. Smaller bonds like this, it's probably hourly. I would say in some of the towns I deal with, if a bond, if we go out for tax anticipation notes, which we don't use here, which is similar to closing a bond anticipation note, turn to legal word, for a million five, it's about eighteen, nineteen hundred dollars. That's the legal fee that was paid, and I just, we just did one the other day, and I don't know the bill list, that's all I'm pretty sure about that. So it's not, we didn't pay twenty percent of one point five million dollars to do that note. Now here, it'll be hourly, so there's documents with their closing. An estimate on just the legal fees is, you know, three to four thousand dollars, and I'm thinking I'm probably high. Some of the engineering for the road work will be a little bit.
John, if you're going to.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Councilman Borback is next.
Okay, yes, so the Public Works Department is a wish list of like six hundred thousand bucks, and the Police Department, it's estimated here over two hundred thousand.
We're down to five forty-nine, nine forty-three.
Yeah, I know that, but I'm looking.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I guess that includes all the extra fees.
Yeah, good, okay, just wanted to.
Shipping and handling costs.
I like it.
With the Police Department, we're around two hundred thousand, and on this list, wish list, we have automated license plate reader.
Are you addressing the chief now?
Well, I was about to.
Okay. Well, you're still talking to Artie, that's not his thing.
Sec lady over here, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I'm talking about Artie, and I'll talk about you later.
If you have questions for the chief.
Well, I'm just making a statement. We have a wish list for an automatic license plate reader, stationary solar speed signs, utility trucks for Public Works and Police, I guess you're going to share one, with a total appropriation estimated at two hundred thousand dollars. And this also speaks to what Artie's, I mean, if we're going to be bonding, or however we're going to finance this, we're in tough economic periods. I don't think it's bad to question, do we really need two pieces of equipment that can dig and pick up things? Do we need an automatic license plate?
Automated license plate.
Automated license plate reader, you know.
Tom, are you suggesting that that be taken off the list?
I'm thinking we should take stuff, if we don't need to spend money on certain stuff, why don't we not get it?
Well, what do you suggest?
Well, I would start with the, I would start with the automated, let me see if I got this.
Automated license plate.
Automated license plate reader and the solar signs, and I don't think we need.
It's a safety issue.
Safety issue. An automatic license plate reader is a safety issue.
It cuts down on the patrolman's time wasted trying to determine someone's a criminal.
So in other words, this, I heard this last, when you were here before, this thing.
They were just criticized for not giving the wishes of our supervisors what they recommend. We were just criticized for that. Now we're going to deny them again?
Well, no, no, it's a question.
You're not getting your equipment.
In other words, so whatever they suggest, we should just give it to them.
We were just criticizing.
You're suggesting a blank.
Would you stop arguing with each other, please? Tom, finish speaking.
I'm not.
No, you finish, and then if you want to say something, but this is not a back-and-forth argument.
All right. I don't think we need an automated license plate reader, so the police can drive around and read license plates as they drive by.
So you're suggesting that come off the list?
I don't think we need solar signs, I don't think we need an articulated front-end loader and a BACCO with a loader. I'm suggesting that we try to trim some of the fat out of this wish, the wish list.
Thank you.
Before we bond or whatever we do to finance, where we have.
We're only introducing it tonight.
Up to twenty percent on top of it. I mean, the less we borrow.
Up to twenty percent.
Yes, up to, I just said up to twenty percent.
You just said twenty percent.
Did I say up to?
We don't need to start correcting each other, please.
In any case, my point is, the less we buy, the less we have to borrow, and the less it's going to cost the taxpayer.
Do you have anything else you suggest we take off?
I just mentioned a few.
I have those.
It says here in section E, obligations shall be directed, unlimited obligations of the borough, and unless paid from other sources, the borough shall be obliged to levy ad valorem taxes, I don't know what ad valorem means.
Real estate taxes.
Real estate taxes, that's what I was going to guess, upon all taxable property within the borough for payment of the obligations and the interest thereof. So, we're, we have to pay for all this stuff eventually, and we have to pay interest on it as well. So less stuff we buy, if we don't really need it right now, maybe we should put it off.
Butch, would you like to speak?
If you put it off, you don't know what the interest rate's going to be three, four, or five years from now. It could be much higher. Right now, the interest rate is, can you help me out?
It depends upon you.
Excuse me, would anyone else like to speak? Councilman Dibber?
I would just say to, I understand Tom's concern, but at the same time, to John's point before, previous councils have not secured a lot of this equipment, especially concerning, let me just finish, please. Especially concerning DPW, that equipment is ancient, and I'm willing to bet that over the course, if we were to secure the equipment, our maintenance costs overall would probably go down somewhere.
Let me.
Excuse me!
I still have the floor, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. In terms of the police equipment, as far as that goes, I see it as a safety issue as well. I mean, to me, and it's, it's a question of protecting our residents as far as that goes. And I think that, given, you know, there have been incidents in our town, and if you can catch someone on Route seventy-one and scan their plate, know that they're not from our town, and possibly there's a warrant for that person, we may have saved someone's house from being burglarized. I think that's an important thing to have, it's an important safety tool, it's safety for our residents.
Councilwoman Sendier.
All right, so I just want to point out exactly what Councilman Dibber said as far happened in our town with all the recent break-ins from all the cars, how the cars were being stolen from. The two gentlemen that were stealing did have cars, they, their license, they, what was it?
They were in the, they were in the street at the time.
They were in the street, and if we had a license, if we had.
The automated license plate reader.
It would have prevented possibly an earlier arrest of suspects that were stealing from a residence for several, for several weeks in a row.
Councilman Borback.
Yeah, to respond to the, the automated license plate reader only reads the license plate if the police car is driving by that vehicle, so if they were in the act of, if they parked outside of a building, was it, wherever they were going to do the break-in burglary, if they happened to be driving by, they might have actually seen the guys. So, I don't know how important that is for two hundred thousand dollars, and with respect to the Public Works, I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting that we don't replace the BACCO that he has, I'm suggesting we don't need that plus another piece of equipment.
Councilman Brennan.
Thank you. With respect to the automated license plate reader for twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars, I would respectfully submit that the community of the borough of Spring Lake Heights taxpayers do not support.
You can do it.
I would respectfully submit, with respect to the automated license plate reader, that the people of the borough of Spring Lake Heights do not support our police having a automated license plate reader. It's Max's Big Brother, it's completely, it's, you know, in the economic times that we have right now, it is a, it's unwarranted. The idea that the technology exists to be able to read people's license plate, it's not just warrants, it reads people whether or not they're driving on a suspended list, there's nightmare stories of people who have been pulled over as a result of driving a vehicle belonging to somebody else whose license is associated with that person's vehicle that's in suspension, and I'm driving their car, and I get pulled over because the automated license plate reader has read that the license associated with that car is in suspension. It's, you know, and tell you what, you want to talk about safety, what about the safety of the community when our police officers are pulling people over as a result of them driving somebody else's car, and they're working through, checking out whether or not the person who's driving the car is in fact the person that they're supposed to be when they could be out, actually catching people who are in the process of committing offenses, as opposed to people who are lawfully driving vehicles, but just so happens that their vehicle is read by an automated license plate reader, and that license comes back with a red flag attached to it. I just don't think that the people support this, I think it smacks the Big Brother, and I think that it's completely inappropriate to be having it put in a bond where its useful life is five years, and the bond, people are going to be paying for this fourteen years from now. As far as the stationary solar speed signs, you know, that's, talk about a wish list, that's a nice wish, to have nice stationary solar speed signs, but you know what, for seventy, for eighty-some-odd years, the borough of Spring Lake Heights has somehow gotten by without stationary solar speed signs, and, you know, I just don't see the need for that. As far as the utility, the new SUVs for the police, again, historically, this council has provided for police vehicles by way of the general budget, and that, the purchase of police vehicles through the general budget does not incur the twenty percent overhead that's going to be incurred here, the tune of twenty-one thousand dollars with respect to these particular, these particular police vehicles. And I would say, as far as the twenty percent being up to twenty percent, I think everybody who lives in New Jersey who follows anything about bonding knows that the twenty percent soft cost margin in a bond is a political trough that the accountants and the underwriters and the attorneys all gather up to, and the idea that that twenty percent's not going to be consumed in the process is, quite frankly.
Thank you. Councilwoman King?
Yes, I would like to ask our police chief if he would explain, so that we really understand what your intent is with the automated license plate reader and with the stationary solar speed signs, and how, first of all, we have to make sure that we qualify for some of this equipment?
Well, first off, the automated license plate reader, Councilman Brennan, I understand your point completely, I understand everybody's point. It's a piece of technology that granted would frighten people, but as we move on in the world, technology increases, and this is part of it. This would allow the same as, that's surrounding towns around you. Madison Square has one, Long Island Ship has one, it's not something that's unfamiliar to the area, it's not something new. I don't hear any nightmares coming out of those two towns, and I happen to know that there are a lot of vehicles being stopped on account of that. It's not something that, a tool that we would use to invade your privacy, I don't really want to know who lives where with it, what it would do, would it be alert us if we were parked on Highway seventy-one? It would allow us to be able to see if there was any type of warrant out for the person, if they were wanted, if they were dangerous, it would give us a heads-up ahead of time, which would enable us to react, yes.
Well, I mean, I don't doubt that you have good intentions, or Artie has good intentions, I just don't think it's necessary when we, you know, we have to borrow, we have to use the credit card again.
Okay.
To buy stuff.
He was asked though to explain what it's for.
What I'm trying to.
Dave, with respect to the warrant issue, you're presuming that the automated license plate reader doesn't read who's in the vehicle. The automated license plate reader reads the license plate.
Reads the license plate, it allows us to read it in a fast rate.
And if, if that license plate is associated in your beta system with someone who may have a warrant, okay, then a red flag would come up on your computer, right?
If it came up on the license plate as a warrant, it would come back to the owner of the vehicle, not somebody in the vehicle.
Okay, so, you're presuming that bad people with warrants out for their arrest are owners of vehicles that are driving through the borough of Spring Lake Heights?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Well, does it also read?
I was presuming that, sir, it would be the other towns around, we have to.
Does it also, does it also read people whose licenses are in suspension?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Now, you will, you will admit, will you not, that people use other people's vehicles on a regular basis?
On a regular basis.
Okay, so that when the automated license plate reader reads.
Reads that license plate.
That license plate is associated with someone who's in suspended status, your officer's going to pull the person over and question the driver to see whether or not the driver is in fact the person with the suspended license.
Yes, provided they match the description.
Provided, well, there's only way they're going to match the description is they can pull them over.
Are we in court? This is like.
I just, I want to understand how the thing works. I want to understand how it works, because I think I know how it works, and I don't think that the people of the borough of Spring Lake Heights support having this Big Brother device. I have heard horror stories from people who have called me as an attorney saying, I got pulled over in my car as a result of the fact that I was driving a car belonging to somebody else, and apparently their license was suspended. Why were their license suspended? Because they didn't pay a traffic ticket someplace, their license was suspended, okay? And they get, that was the owner of the car, their license was suspended because they didn't pay a traffic ticket. You will admit that a great deal of license suspensions occur as a result of traffic ticket, parking ticket violations, okay? So we got somebody driving through town, who's got, driving through town in a car owned by somebody whose license is in suspension because of a parking ticket violation, and now we're going to have our police officers stop them, do an identification of them by way of description, ask them what's going on, make a determination about what's going on, and then ultimately perhaps let them go on their way, perhaps not, I don't know what happens, but at the same time, that's downtime, that's lost time of our officers, because they're filing a wild goose chase.
John, excuse me, but I wanted Dave to explain all this first, so can we, let him do that?
All right.
But we possess the technology now.
Dave, you're going to have to turn this way to the council here.
Okay, I did want, I did want to turn my back on the audience, because it was the people of Spring Lake Heights that don't want this, so I want to explain this to them all.
I know, but they need to hear you too.
Take the mic out.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes? All right. We have the technology now, we have, we have computers in the cars, this enable us, enables us to read it faster. Now we have, we could do that same thing, we could run a license plate from the car. This would enable us to do it that much quicker.
Thank you. Sarah, do you have another question?
Well, what about the speed signs?
The solar speed signs?
Yeah.
Seemed like a great idea at the time, still does, in the point of, what could be your number one complaint in the town, speeders, right? Right, Mrs. Erb?
Yes.
What makes, what makes you conscious more than seeing these speed signs better on telephone poles when you go by and you have conscious effort, if you're going twenty-seven into twenty-five, you'll know that you're supposed to be going twenty-five? Am I right or wrong? Am I right or wrong? Have you ever come up to one of the signs?
What makes you more conscious is seeing a police car.
That's true. And our police are out there.
They are. But our police are going to be busy with automated site, plate, license plate reader, pulling people over.
Do we have any other questions for Ms., for the chief?
Mayor?
Rich?
Can I call the question, please?
Well, there is no question.
There is no question. Well, it's just on a motion to introduce. Are there any other questions for Dave? Nobody has any. Thank you, Dave.
Could I say one last thing, unrelated? Mayor, happy birthday.
Thank you.
I had to bring it up because nobody caught up to him.
Sit down. Any other, already wants to speak?
I just have one question. Tom, I just want to, just to make something clear. The reason I really want to replace the backhoe is only because it's a 1988 and the parts were obsolete. I need that. My, here's what I want you to tell me. Should we get another snowstorm like we had last December? Where I had to borrow a bulldozer from one town and a loader from another town to open up the streets, sometimes it took two days. People's lives were at risk. Up to that point, we never had a snowstorm like that. So nobody can be blamed without, for having this big expensive piece of equipment sitting in the yard. But now we know and if it happens again, what should I do?
Well, the last time we had a snowstorm like that, if I recall correctly, was the January 6th, 7th?
It was a December snowfall, 30 inches in 24 hours.
In December, January 6th, 7th, 8th, it was 1996.
Wait, yeah, before that, but no, it was over three days. This came...
Well, you're not letting me finish.
Go ahead.
Okay. That storm was legitimately over three days and we had, I think it was up almost 40 inches of snow. That was 96. Then we had this storm.
But the difference?
And the difference is, yes, this came much faster.
Well, and, and resulting...
But you're following your logic, okay? We should, we should have half a dozen of these storms.
Well, no, no, but you wouldn't, well, here's what happened though. In reality, our plows didn't work.
I know that. I helped, I helped with the truck.
But, but that's the point. In order to open up the streets for the first time since I've lived here, 57 years, we have not been able to use our plows and open up the streets. Believe me, first time. Scared the hell out of me because the first of all, we didn't have the ability. There's nothing, I had to reach out to other towns. And in fairness, I have to wait for the other towns to finish their towns because their residents, and here's my question to you. Why should Spring Lake Heights residents have to wait for other towns to finish, for us to clear our streets? And I don't ever want to be in that position again. And that's my whole point.
So you asked me a question. So with the new backhoe loader, that can't move snow?
We own a backhoe loader.
So you're buying it?
That's, no, it's, just, you keep saying that. I have one. It didn't work.
Yeah, you have a, a 19, was it 1988?
It worked. Either it runs or it doesn't. I can't repair it when it breaks.
I understand.
It was working.
You're buying, your, your plan, your wish list is to have...
The loader is snow.
Okay.
Snow.
Arnie, if you, if you keep on interrupting, I can't answer.
No, stop. Finish.
You want articulated front end loader because you want to move snow.
Right.
And you got another backhoe that has a front end loader on it as well.
You're not comparing apples and apples.
It has a front end loader.
It's a much smaller bucket.
It's a smaller, albeit smaller.
And it's, and it's, has the thing hanging out the back and it's not articulate.
I know it doesn't articulate.
It makes the difference. It's like 1988.
Sometimes I don't, sometimes my articulation isn't perfect either.
I see, yeah. You're going to be straight line.
We have a motion on the floor.
All I want to know is, how am I going to clear the snow?
Arnie, so...
I'm not getting anywhere.
He keeps on answering. I want to answer him. You're, you're buying two pieces of equipment. The articulated front end loader and then the other piece of equipment. That other piece of equipment happens to have a loader on it. That, I ask you a question, can that move snow?
That can move small quantities of snow. It was not strong enough to move the quantities needed to open the streets.
The old one was not strong enough.
Listen, no, that, I'm probably, wait, first of all, the old one is the same model as the new one. It worked. It worked because our mechanic keeps it up. It couldn't do the job, it was size too small.
We've said that a couple of times. Thank you.
That's the difference. This can't do the job.
You've said it, Arnie.
Mayor, a call.
We put chains on everything too.
Yeah, we have, we're calling the question. May I have, there's a motion on the floor to call the question. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
And this requires a roll call, two thirds vote?
Yes.
But can we discuss only?
No.
No, it's a motion.
Janine, could I have a roll call on calling the question? He called the question. I'm sorry.
John, you are out of order. You are out of order. You are out of order, John. You are out of order.
There's $500,000 more.
You are out of order.
There's $500,000 more roll calls.
Brennan, excuse me, it can be voted by? Go ahead.
Mr. Brennan?
It's not debatable, a motion to call the question.
Mr. Brennan? Ms. Cindya?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Mechanico?
Yes.
Mr. Borba?
No.
Okay, the motion to introduce and advertise in accordance with the law, it's simply to introduce and advertise. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Brennan?
No.
Ms. Cindya?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Mechanico?
Yes.
Mr. Borba?
No.
Motion passed.
May I have a motion, please, to set the public hearing for August 15th, 2011 at 8:00 PM or thereafter?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Ms. Cindya?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Mechanico?
Yes.
Mr. Borba?
We're unanimous, yes.
New business item ordinance number 15, establishing salary and wages for 2011. Oh, I'm sorry, would you read the title, please?
Ordinance 15 dash 2011, an ordinance of the Borough of Spring Lake Heights establishing salaries and wages for 2011.
May I have a motion, please, to introduce and advertise in accordance with the law?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on the salary and wage ordinance?
Yes, I would like to amend this ordinance again to remove item number nine. I do not feel that this belongs in the salary and wage. I believe it belongs in our codes. And I also, as I have stated in the past, object to the unpaid lunch since it applies to only two of our office personnel. And I'd like to explain that. We have seven people that work in our borough office, three of which are exempt because they are salaried employees and they get a paid lunch automatically. We have two part-time people that work in there who do not get a lunch at all. If they were to take a break, it would be unpaid because they classified as part-time and that leaves two remaining individuals in the office who would not, in fact, get a lunch if this was to remain here. It has nothing to do with any other employees in town. We're strictly talking about the employees that are in the office.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Yes. So what you're saying is that this provision applies to two people?
Yep.
I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to cut out this, um, this email from Tracy Armstrong to me regarding what Sarah has been talking about. But it does indicate that she is looking for paid lunches for the DPW personnel as well, you know, just, just...
Any other discussion?
That's the first step before...
Any other discussion on the amendment? May I have a roll call, please, on amending it to remove number nine?
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Ms. Cindya?
No.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Mechanico?
Yes.
Mr. Borba?
Yes.
Okay, now may I have, we have a motion on the floor to introduce and advertise in accordance with the law, the salary and wage for 2011.
The other thing, the motion is second to introduce as amended.
Okay, can I have a motion then to introduce as amended?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call then on the motion to introduce the salary and wage ordinance?
Mr. Brennan?
No.
Ms. Cindya?
No.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Mechanico?
Yes.
Mr. Borba?
No.
There we have it.
This is simply to introduce it? But I have a motion, please, to set the public hearing for August 15th, 2011 at 8:00 PM or thereafter?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Ms. Cindya?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Mechanico?
Yes.
Mr. Borba?
Yes.
Ordinance number 16, 2011, which was edge to the agenda today. Would the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 16 dash 2011, ordinance of the Borough of Spring Lake Heights, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, providing for the dissolution of the Spring Lake Heights Fire District Number One pursuant to NJSA 40A colon 5A dash 20.
May I have a motion, please, to introduce and advertise in accordance with the law? You have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, as I understand it now, this is a motion to dissolve the fire district.
This is the ordinance under 40A 5A dash 20 to dissolve the court.
But we can't adopt this ordinance until after the local finance board makes the determination of the local...
Could you talk louder, Tom, can you?
I say, we cannot actually adopt this ordinance until after the local finance board approves the dissolution.
Well, what happens is the, the final act we're going to have to do is pass a resolution, an ordinance that they like. They may have a change to this. Some dissolutions are more complicated. They involve bonds, they involve indebtedness. Sometimes they'll, they'll recommend changes to this and if they're significant, we'd have to redo it.
But that only happens after the hearing with them?
Well, there's two phases. Next, we're going, I believe we work with the staff down there and they look at everything that's been submitted because by the time you get the actual final meeting date, there's 30 or 40 matters on it. The, the local finance board generally files, follows staff recommendation. So I anticipate a meeting with staff before then where they'll go through the math of what we're doing, the overall plan, and they'll make a recommendation. They may have some changes to this and if there are changes that are significant, it might have to be advertised, but it requires, it requires an ordinance. This is in a form that I have used because another authority in a different county used this ordinance just like this one, it's been changed for purposes of reflecting the right kind of authority, says there are no bonds, things like that, but local finance board has approved an ordinance like this before, so I'm pretty, very satisfied that for the most part, this will pass their muster.
You know, all I can say about this, all I can say about this issue with respect to the fire district, that this council has approved a plan to dissolve the fire district and sent it off to the, to the local finance board, which plan was never provided to us and we were being asked to approve a plan that was never provided to us. We're now being asked to adopt an ordinance to, to dissolve the fire district before the local finance board has determined whether or not this plan, which none of us has received or at least I haven't received it.
I think, I got it in my packet. I think it was submitted. I gave it out in the packet this week. And there was one, one paper deleted which was added, which was in my package tonight.
No, no, my point, the point is, is that you, this, I just have the overwhelming sense that this council or the majority, or maybe the majority of this council, has this need to dissolve the fire district without following proper procedures. We were asked, and this is a matter of record, to vote on submitting a plan to the DCA, which plan had not been provided to us. Now, we are being asked to adopt an ordinance dissolving the fire district, which is going to be contingent upon another board making the determination that the plan is acceptable. I think, call me silly, but I think maybe we should wait to see whether or not that board agrees with our plan before we start adopting ordinances dissolving a fire district. That's what I think. And I think we are pushing this issue and I think, and I don't really know why, my fear is that I guess the majority thinks that there's some sort of political gain and I, I think that's really sad.
John, if we were to do this tonight to approve, to introduce and advertise?
Introducing corrections.
But we can't set a public hearing yet because we don't know when that public hearing will be.
Well, I think you could, you could set April 15th, August 15th, because you're only meeting August. And if it's, if we don't have, go ahead, you go ahead, we would table it and move the public hearing to the next one.
So that could go on until the DCA finally acts?
The DCA in the end, it's a little bit of a catch 22. They have to approve your ordinance, the one you submit, the proposed one, and the final pass, hypothetically. They put, they, they, they approve your proposed one, you pass one that's different, you make some material change that they're upset about. Then you send it into them, they say, "What is that? This isn't what you sent us." So actually, in the end, it's done when the fully compliant ordinance is passed.
I think I see what John is saying, why don't we just wait then till it gets passed? I mean, till they tell us what they want?
Well, but, but the, well, I just always, the introduction is just an introduction. And again, I'm, again, in the, in the package that was submitted, the proposed ordinance was submitted as part of it, the executive summary and most of the other information is a, a little bit of pro forma, it's names that address the people for the meetings, things like that. There's not a, a lot of the math in this.
So John, to the point that the mayor raised, if the DCA hasn't acted by the August 15th council meeting?
We'll be tabled.
We have the table, so we're just going to continually table until the DCA?
Well, if they, well, you, you, you may, you may be fortunate because I don't run the, the local finance board's agenda.
Why don't we just wait until the DCA acts and then?
Because this, this ordinance, because the ordinance, I believe, is going to be accepted. And the only reason I'm saying, the only reason I'm saying, don't just pass it without approval is just on the very off chance there's something else they want included.
Why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't we vote on a resolution approving a form of ordinance and send the resolution and the form of ordinance down to the DCA so they can review the form of ordinance?
They have the ordinance. They have, they have that.
So I mean, I, it just doesn't make any sense to me that we would have to carry something interminably, waiting for an event, that we could just wait for the event to occur anyway?
I'm hoping it's not interminable, but it is trepidant.
It is trepidant.
But, but I don't think, I don't think we'd lose anything to put it on, it, it's one more paragraph on the agenda or whatever thing. I don't think that's...
And, and September 7th, then September 21st.
We don't get that far.
All right, any other discussion on this? Tom?
Yeah, I kind of agree, we're putting the cart before the horse. This council does tend to be hasty, if you ask me. I mean, the fire district was a public referendum that instituted in the first place. Their latest budget back in February was voted almost two to one and we rushed to get rid of this thing. The district methods actually spreads the costs across all residents, businesses, even tenants in, in apartment buildings, so that cost is in the rent. So it spreads the cost out around to all people. Under the council financing and taking over the, the fire company essentially, what we're asking is, we're asking our volunteers, they're going to be underfunded from the council and we're going to be asking our firefighters, who are volunteers, not only have the burden of fighting fires, being trained, being prepared and all that other stuff, we're also going of fighting fires, being trained, being prepared, and all that other stuff, we're also gonna end up forcing them to go out and do fundraising in addition, an added burden to them. I think this whole thing was rushed through, it's ill-conceived, and I completely against it.
We have a motion on the floor to introduce and advertise in accordance with the law. Any other discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Brennan?
No.
Ms. Cindya?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Mechanico?
Yes.
Mr. Borback?
No.
Could I have a motion, please, to set the public hearing also for August fifteenth, two thousand eleven, at eight P.M. or thereafter?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Just, I wanna make it clear that we are now setting for a public hearing, and we're gonna have to publish notice for a hearing date that in all likelihood is gonna be adjourned. My vote is... Now, I haven't voted because I haven't... that's not a roll call, but it's gonna be now.
Any other discussion? Tom?
Yeah, now, publishing involves a cost in this paper.
Correct.
And then if we delay it, it's another publishing cost, and if we delay it again...
If you make a motion to carry it without further notice, then...
Yeah, but then we don't give the public an opportunity to be heard.
It's in the roll show, not published.
And they're gonna show up on August fifteenth, and we're gonna carry it.
If... maybe, but August fifteenth is the local finance board meeting, so I'm hoping not.
Any other discussion?
Merit gets around.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Brennan?
No.
Ms. Cindya?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Mechanico?
Yes.
Mr. Borback?
No.
We have the consent agenda. If anyone would like anything pulled from the consent agenda. There was one thing added very recently, a quest... request for outdoor music. This just came in, and the outdoor music is on August sixth. It's from the same party who requested it last year, apparently. And we checked with the chief of police, there were no problems with it. We put it on for tonight because we don't have a meeting now till August fifteenth. Usually, you know, we would wait on that. But we checked, and apparently, everything was okay. They had the same thing last year on approximately the same date. So, you'll see, that was added today. Anybody want anything pulled?
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm, sure.
There's a group that's gonna be canvassing the neighborhood.
Are you talking about the Environmental Federation?
Yeah.
Yeah, they've done that for...
I understand. Is there a mechanism that you can opt out of being canvassed?
Pardon?
If you don't wanna be disturbed?
I know that with respect to the Federation, the New Jersey Environmental Federation in years past, we have not allowed them to go to nine P.M. in September because...
Well, would you like to change the time?
I think they went it, John, didn't they go till like seven, six or seven?
I don't know exactly what the deadline was. I mean, this is July through September, so they're already looking to do it. I mean...
Because somebody possibly won't be... Eight o'clock might be...
But they haven't started yet.
I have my trusty phone that has the sunset time. Shall I check the sunset time?
Oh, yeah.
It says, "Bear with me for a second."
Certainly.
I know how this works, so it's gonna take two...
We help.
I'll wait for the go-off. I'll wait for the go-off.
Hold on, hold on.
Didn't it cost you twenty-six thousand?
Sunset, sunrise.
Sunset.
I just gotta move it.
If it plays a song, we're gonna really laugh. Sunrise, sunset.
Someone called Ted.
You've gotta go.
Tonight, John.
It's covered. This is the fast way.
We could just set it at seven or something.
Yeah, let's set it at seven.
How about seven P.M.?
Yeah, that's good.
Everybody okay with that? Tom, I don't know how you get off the list entirely. Just tell them not to return ever again if they come to your door. Or you can put no canvases on your door. All right, can I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Ms. Cindya?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mr. Mechanico?
Yes.
Mr. Borback?
Yes.
May I have a motion, please, to open the second voice of the public for new business only?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone like to speak? New business.
New business.
Part of Martin's seven nineteen Park Avenue. I'd like to ask a question of the chief.